The anniversary of nine eleven and for all the innocent victims. Carriages across our country this last year and the last years, so both aside. Thank you. Okay, engineer. So we have any public comments? Item items? One?
You can read the file.
Thanks.
Alright, so. Hailing away store separation phase two. So there's been, I don't wanna say, we've just been continuing away from the railroads. Tedesco has done a good job of staying on that, but they're doing exactly what they did to us and just not responding. We did, I mean, how does it all come to be with that? Because we decided that our next step is probably gonna be to start talking to some state reps.
Um, cuz I know that Lou had been mentioning talking to our state representatives and state senators, but I knew that whenever you're dealing with the railroads, that the only, the only tier that really has teeth in the game is the federal government. So I reached out to Senator Federman's office, my final call out to Summerlee. So we'll see how that one goes, but Federman followed up. They are, their office is kicking our issue to their transportation policy specialist based in DC. You know, we'll see how that helps move things along.
And so, we're trying, we're doing everything we can to keep things moving along. We did respond to someone from Federman's office, and I don't know exactly what his position was there, what he does for him, but one of his aides or staffers, they wanted some time out information, so we did that today. So we're just gonna see where that gets us, but ultimately, we're waiting for that approval to get started. Tedesco is ready to roll, I think based on the boring company needs about two weeks to get down here, but I think they were gonna even, if they could see, if they could get some date in mind here with the railroads, they wanna come down and start to clean the tracks. But I just don't think he wants to mobilize and then run out of work and have to leave site again, which I can understand. So we're kind of, this whole project is again on hold because of the railroad. Moving on to transforming 12th, as you know, there was a change order issued for some items. We talked a little bit about last month, the end is starting to work through those. Right now, the system's been cleaned again, so you know, all the debris that's washed in has been cleaned in conjunction with install, installation of the inlet bags that we talked about. The crates have been standardized and some of the bump out areas have been filled with the heavy stone. That's gonna help with some of the erosion issues should we continue to have any. There's still a few items that need to be done and completed there, and they're gonna continue to work through that. We don't know if we can replace the manhole yet. I have a question for Nick on that, he never got back. More to come, but the pipe bit in the manhole lid are on the to do list of that. In fact, extensive conversations about the CD forty-nine, Clean Park exercise equipment, that project. We had hoped to go through Co-Stars, but since it's through the CD, the CD BG, they do not allow the use of Co-Stars. I guess, that's what we're being told by the COG. We had to hurry up and get bid documents together. I sent that to Jenny today. She will have an ad put in the paper, we should see it next week, who would be the first ad running that. So it will be advertised, she has everything she needs, I believe at this point. So we'll have, I don't know what the bid opening schedule yet, it's gonna depend on what she, what she steps up through the COG.
Before you go, Biggie Federman, I follow that you want to say fast, when you say they put in stone for transforming twelve? For erosion, to help stop erosion?
So, you remember the, down near the school?
Yeah, right.
The, above the new concrete, little bump out island looking things? They were just filled with dirt and plants before. And with the heavy rains that we got, it blew everything out. It had small rocks and dirt and plants, it was, it was a mall, too bad for life.
And were those plants, like, did we ever look at those were native plants, like suck up water?
That's, that's what they're designed.
Okay, so, when you said erosion, I was like, what is erosion?
We were just trying to minimize that if there's an, there's an over, there's water that spills over, like it had been doing, we're not washing every contents of that bump out down toward the school when we're rolling in. So there's, there's big heavy hard force stone, so it won't come out.
But nothing is erosion, why?
No, 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 this is.
The plants were dirt, well, yeah.
Yeah, they didn't even have a chance to grow.
So Brad, also, when you're saying that Ridos is still working on repairs?
Yes, it's not done yet.
Okay, so he's actually doing some work?
There's still more work to be done through the change order for that project, yeah. I, like I said, I believe the pipe that we know that's cracked, that's gonna have to get repaired. And then the manhole lid, we're putting a watertight manhole lid on there too, so it won't come off in the event of a surge or.
So outside of the crack, what else was there?
So we talked, well, we had, we wanted to put new in, or those inlet bags, we talked about these building screens in all of the inlets that are tied to that system. We haven't had them on a week before, before, now they're on all of them. So, the idea being, we're gonna catch more debris from going and getting stuck against the tank, preventing water from backing up and pushing in or everything out. You see what I'm saying? So, the inlet bags are there to serve, to help serve that purpose.
So that's what was happening up on twelve two, where the sidewalk had pushed up somewhere, by the church.
Where, on twelve?
Yeah, that's what happened on twelve.
What church?
Where it passed the school.
That's when the grate came up out of there?
Yeah.
I don't know if the company came back and did anything to that, but there was, there was a.
That's when they broke it down.
A manhole, right, oh, right.
What did you say?
I'm sorry, yeah, that's one of the items to be completed, that. It will get fixed. What it's gonna be is, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a lockable manhole lid, so it cannot come off, you know what I mean?
Does it not require special tools to remove?
I don't know that it's gonna be special tools, but it will require a tool. I don't know if there are people like Allen keys that hold it down, or if it's gonna be, I'll find out.
Is that something, you know, that we should have?
It's gonna have to happen, we'll make sure, we'll make sure you get it, we'll make sure you get some needed stuff.
D W, are they, are they trained, or they just wanna be trained on?
That's the conversation we're gonna have to have. So we have to create a more detailed L and M that's gonna have to outline what they need to clean and clean. And that will involve them on some type of a scheduled basis going through, pulling those out, taking the lid, or taking the grates off, and then pulling the brackets out and then cleaning them.
And what they have to have special?
You don't need anything special. The manhole, or I'm sorry, the catch basin or the inlet grates are heavy. There's hooks and tools that you can get for those to assist. I mean, a lot of times, public works will have these two guys with hooks, pull them out, that way you're gonna be splitting it between two different guys. I'll leave, I'll leave that up to the burglar that decides if they want. We can get a tool to help with it.
So, because, when, when you're talking about those inlet bags, right now, with all the traffic going up across the Hala Bridge and up into Brownsville, I seen them just recently, they have inlet bags. So they have a machine that they're riding up the sidewalk, pull the thing up, take the inlet bag out. So what I saw them do, just take the bag for the sake of time and put another one in. So they'll probably get plugged out one off.
These are, these are, I don't know what they have there exactly, but these aren't bags that are gonna be disposable, this is.
No, no, so these aren't disposable bags, but I'm saying this for sake, the sake of time, because they're doing like on traffic, they're just taking those ones out, put a new one in and probably get it back. They got more bags.
They probably have something specific for that purpose, to be quick and in and out.
They have more bags, right, they have more inlet bags.
They had people washing it out.
That's what I'm saying, so for sake of time, but what I'm saying is, it's not a, it was not a tool, it was a tool to figure it out. It was like a little machine that they were driving and just lifted it up and put it back.
I'm sure that you could get an attachment for like a little dip crane or a six gear, absolutely.
And that's for other jobs.
Yeah.
I mean, they sell them, like, it just, two things on wheels and have hooks, and it just pivots down, and it's just like a, like a doll. But it hooks onto the bottom, so you can get that. It's not outrageously expensive, I mean.
Turn it off.
Yeah, I mean, we're down now.
Yeah, cuz you get to. Thank you.
So wait a minute, so what's the tag, so we won't run into the wind?
No, I don't believe so. In fact, I wanted to get, I wanted to get an idea when he was gonna be back today. I think he's waiting, he's waiting for some of the. And I know, not, we can't let it go though.
Yeah.
No, no, we're not, that's not his plans. I would expect that coming next. For the CD forty-nine, right? That's what we left on?
Yes.
Oh, I talked about that, that's, that's legit, okay. We did apply, we talked last month about the twenty twenty-five D U T F grant application, that was from Clean Park. And in that meeting, you guys wanted to do playground equipment surface, and we put back in the pickleball court and the adult exercise.
The ball around there, I think that's closed.
It's all in there, I think you guys, or I'm sorry, approved the resolution, so that's all covered now. That's been submitted, I guess. And then, the last thing on here is the twenty twenty-three LS A funding. That was for eighty-nine thousand, six fifty-eight towards the purchase of that asphalt patching machine we've been talking about. I just wanted to make sure, did you guys, you voted to move forward, correct? So, the, so the eighty-nine, six fifty-eight. The last purchase price we saw was around ninety-one thousand, so there's a, there's a little bit of a out of pocket cost, yes. But, I am ready now, I have the forms from Amanda, I have the vendor's information, but I do need to reach back out with the purchase order from the company. I don't wanna do that until you guys say it's okay though. Cuz that's eighty-nine thousand dollars that we won't give back if you decide not to. Do it for one. No, it's, I'm fine, I just, I don't, you know, I, I never saw for sure that we, we're okay, I guess. I just didn't know if that ever made it on the agenda. Just like I said, it won't be enough, not a pocket loss.
And I'm assuming if they don't do this, they've gotta repair that LS A money.
It's not even a big deal, it's reimbursed by the grant.
So we have to pay for it and then give it back?
And I actually found out that's not true.
How long is it reimbursed, really?
You can submit invoices, 'cause I'm directly, they'll get the invoice, as long as the final invoice is done within six weeks.
Let's do that, so we don't ever have to.
We should, we should go and verify with the person handling ours, but I just found that out. And it's the same, just what I was gonna say.
That's wrong, because my next question was, how long is it gonna take to get our money back? So now if we can do that, then we don't have to worry about that, we just play around with it?
We, for years, we've been operating under the premise that it was reimbursed and only, cancel check only. We said about, they said they have a standard community, so we don't have the money.
Yes.
Exactly.
You don't have.
So what do we have to do to get that money back?
Send them a purchase order, say.
You write a document?
Amanda gave me everything, I just need to know that you guys are all agreed, that's all I need, yes. So I will take your advice more and more.
And that's all we got. The next CD BG money is opening up right now. And the, what I heard was, it's gonna be fifty-five thousand dollar annual awards.
It's a fifty minimal.
Yes, I appreciate it, so it's, it's, it's not gonna be, we can't finish little things. We have to find bigger projects, because they've raised the floor. So maybe we can half for half million, but it has to be fifty thousand and up, fifty-five.
Yes, I mean.
Yeah, and that's, you know, what we're thinking on that, this now, it's, it won't be real long for us to turn it in.
So they changed it, it used to be, there used to be pre-application process in Alachia County for CDs. They're no longer requiring pre-up. And I think that deadline is all the way out till December. But COG is gonna want it sooner if we're going through COG, so we just need to decide, like Lou was saying, what are we looking at? They explicitly stated no demolition, that, they want that all under the Act one fifty-two program. So we would be looking at, and again, be mindful of the fact that it's area-specific, that it's a community development. Gonna be blocked, whatever they call that, it's census and locality and code grid. So, we can't, we gotta be careful, we don't pick something that someone outside of town can benefit from, that's what we try.
Can you give an example of what it would be like, I mean, what?
Well, street reconstruction.
But not main streets.
But you cannot pick a street with a church or a building on it, so that's what makes that challenging. Yeah, no, those, I think those were all eligible projects. It's just, stormwater, stormwater gets a little tricky sometimes, because you, you're supposed to say who benefits from that? And you kinda just have to take a census of the area, so, I mean, it could be dotted, that's what we do.
Park improvements. What? Park improvements. So, and this isn't, like, we haven't talked about it, but we've had so many events at Creek Park. And, you know, we, we have that flat area with the curable pavers. That stuff seems like the perfect place for pavilion, we really don't have a pavilion in Homestead. Just a thought.
The Creek Park is so open. Here is that gouge, the rainbow we used to put tips where the water is running down, that would be.
Usually where it comes down under the steps.
That's like where the, where the fountain is where it has the gully cart into the hillside now?
I need to figure out what the heck happened there, I don't know, I know there's a drain coming out of the fountain, but I don't know that it's hot air, right?
We don't know.
We know that Lou and Harry have some, some old, like, inlets or something in the hillside.
Yeah, yeah, Lou had called me one day and had me look at it.
So we should look.
That's fine, we wanted to have something with the stormwater at park, yes.
We could bring the building to park too, and then we could have a water tunnel for that part.
Yeah.
And what part of the building is gonna get about over fifty-four?
Okay, but I would not want you to mess with that aesthetic of the park, I shouldn't have done that. It's just something, because now we'd be, Creek Park is one of the parts that we can't close, like, we, we locked down all the other parts. Now we run into people just being, all irises.
Probably because they have a dog in there?
Well, because we can't lock that park up, so you could just walk freely in there and be in the park all night doing whatever under that facility. So we lock up nine, we lock up the plane, 'cause we got the pavilion up a plane, we lock that up. This, we can't lock a park.
Yeah, give it some thought, let me know, we just know a bit.
The Pennsylvania American Water list for West Side, I'm saying. So, it overlaps, 'cause you and I have to have a conversation. I think like a year and a half ago, Pennsylvania American Water asked Homestead to co-sponsor a grant, because we have a lot of lead lines in Homestead, and they know that the West Side had the highest concentration of it. So, that remediation in the West Side of Homestead looks like them tearing up and replacing most of the streets. So, this is, their project hasn't gone out of bid yet, but they sent us a list of, of the streets and intersections from where to where they're gonna have to be paving. And, you know, one, we have to talk about, you know, now that we have the lease for the sewer camera, we have, you know, wanna know what the state of the sewers are, because if that, those roads are already getting tore up, we'll let Pennsylvania American Water pave and store them. But then, we also, you know, just for adding little patches of paving to it, you know, we could have the entire West Side of Homestead repaved and good for ten years. We won't have to worry about a paving program in that whole area of Homestead for ten years.
Okay, with all the sewers up there, you present sewer repairs, you know, before water pump and repaint.
You say in the CD on that?
No, but that's just, but, because, you know, Brad, we've been so busy, this is the first day I've spoken to you in weeks.
Yeah, I know. We don't have any rats. I'm by looking into it, to try to see how much it costs through a grant, to bring out a pump. I would like to see that operating again on twenty-four seven. But I think that would be a nice venue for children to attend Creek Park for our events. If that pump is only turned on during a certain time of the year, or if you're serving that zone.
What would they do if we had that? I know, that was a long time ago.
Yeah, but.
I think that was a while ago.
If we did that now, we'd have, we'd have a water filtration system, you don't need water.
And before I saw you do that, there'd be a spray park in the plant. I would go with, with Mary. That's right. We do, we gonna restore some water, we have a water park, I mean, our fountain, you know, like they have in the east, we're like.
Okay, any other comments or questions, engineer?
No, we will have to think about LS A, both rowing up.
One more thing for Brad, that project, we grow, it has been playing on for six months, right?
Oh, yeah. Just this, most recent effort.
I would be saying now, it's sorry.
Would we just keep?
That's not.
If there were, if all of the tickets, that's all.
Well, Amanda's going to give me the information, because I.
I am meeting with some of the.
And we just, we just have it all set.
I have it handed to you, yes. Okay. At least. So, I guess we'll talk about the block. This company is related to, more or less, lending us four cameras that will be placed on the end for a hundred eighty days. With, with these cameras, especially my mom listens, they're also gonna jump up working, very good, have four cameras. But if they do go along with this, we have access to their cameras and my access to ours. Kinda works like in a ring. If we put them in, there's a five hundred mile radius of these cameras that the department can all get and see, and then it gives us the same access. Like I said, it's, it's, for a hundred eighty days, they install them, and process it, it's to the book. But then a hundred eighty days, if we decide we don't want them, they can take them out, create a charge. But what I was told, two of them will be solar powered, two of them will be plugged in, they will use our, our degree post. Two will be situated at, at the court. One will be, no, two will be at Eighth Avenue. It'll be one at Eighth Avenue Court. With those cameras, we can input stolen plates, your cameras will actually track that plate throughout wherever it is. Like this is, if there was a homicide. You judge. Whatever, whatever borough or the town has that camera, that plate as well, you can track that part. There's also the ability for us to put plates in for a local police team, that plate hits on, on the cameras. It's a time to. It is not, they do have software that can do that, I think we, the ref reached out to Anne, it's all. She advised that that's still part of the DA's office, something's going on there, so we don't actually have the authority to let them take over those cameras, but with this software, they do have something that's called. Now, some other cameras, just they can put software, they can act, they can place it, they're just, they don't necessarily have to have five hundred four cameras. It's usually a toll-free place.
And so are we looking to have these cameras on Eighth Avenue for traffic, it's on vehicles, or are we looking to cut down?
I mean, a perfect example, I just, Richard White was pumped by a vehicle several weeks ago. They gave us, what happened to people, we had a car intersection, but they probably see what the right plate was, and you're in the line. But that would be for stolen vehicles, accidents, and really a lot of property. Storing the plate, possibly if there's a situation. We'd act with no cameras. They're, they're pretty.
Well, no, no, I'm not saying that, I'm saying, what, why would we have chose Eighth Avenue versus, we got gun issues up here on twelve, or thirteen, or sixteen, or seventeen? What, what we're focusing on Eighth Avenue?
So much of it is because.
Bigger issues are up to you.
Permission-wise, for them to put cameras elsewhere. They got the permission to do the plates, they put them on their poles. Just for the simple fact that we were gonna put them on, we'd have to test. We own the poles of our own poles, so they're still. Other than to, to place these cameras. Most of the cameras that Mon Hall and West End said are gonna put in are basically along, that's made by.
Yeah, but when we were going to get cameras for the child, shots, waters, or any of those things, would we have to go through the same regulations, like that, you can't like, have to buy us to put the water poles?
Right.
Because I don't see no have to issue, because it's shot waters all over the city all over now.
I, I know that, from, from looking at the rep that does these cameras, there is some kind of protocol that you have to reach out. And any of those poles, because they. I know some of the local business owners have reached out and they're okay with, if that becomes the case, to put those cameras on there. Their beliefs, so we don't leave the mission under them, under the city.
Yeah, but I don't have business owners in areas where I'm having issues with it. It shouldn't.
I understand, so, with, with these four cameras, it's, it's, it's. Trial offer division. It's that was the easiest place to put these cameras to see if working or not.
And what does it look like after the, after the eight, you know, after the town, after the six months, what does it look like?
That is, it's, it's twelve thousand dollars a year. So, the, the upside of that is that the DA's office is in some kind of, lack of better words, turmoil with the people that run the other cameras, because it's a placement, that's the Navy Company did. Their software recognizing all the plates and sending the information, and rock, they did a stack of them, so. They're trying to work out a better rate replacement, so this company, Block, is trying to beat that. So, if that is the case, they're gonna be able to offer a county library that everybody that has the cameras, which, in terms of, everybody is on the system. It brings our hospital.
So who's gonna get, where would the system be, say, well, we need to get back and review camera, who's gonna be in charge?
From what I understand, it's Block based, so, so.
But you would have access to it?
The officers, basically, just logged in as a pass or such.
Is that twelve thousand per camera, or that's for our own?
That's, that's just, that's for everything at this point. If, if, after the hundred eighty days, we decide to do that, that's what we're doing.
Now, again, you said that all those cameras, they're gonna be on Eighth Avenue, but if it's possible, Eighth Avenue. Is that the definite thing, they have to be on Eighth Avenue, 'cause again, like you said, I live on Sixteenth, there's a lot of stuff that happens up there. So can we put some, like, maybe even on Fourth Street, but sixteen, yeah, on the corner?
They don't have to, but, but for the ease of, of seeing if we would, we're gonna, like, this system, two of the cameras are solar powered, so they can go crazy land, as long as they got signs that function, they're fine. The other two are going to be, you're gonna have to plug in, so our posts on Eighth Avenue already have outlets in them. The Christmas signs we put up and so forth, there's already options. So, just to get a peek at how these gonna work, that was the.
So, what about putting one in on Eighth and McCourt, and then the other one back down by West Street? And then maybe have one up higher, like on Twelfth and Thirteenth, or on Sixteenth, or one on the West Side. We do on the Twelfth, like, on, on West Street, and then maybe one on Fourth Street, somewhere in the middle, up higher, where.
And then that's the only, and if we say we like them, then you start here, and say, you know what, we like it, we wanna keep home, but here's where we'd like to see these other two again.
I think what the, the idea from what you're talking is to have them at least close together, so you wanna be able to trace these actors. And I'm, and I'm gonna guess the reason why I had to put them on Eighth Avenue. Kyle, Chuck, you guys got a lot of stolen cars, a lot of other criminals coming through, other jurisdictions, not just that crime that has occurred here. You're probably gonna catch a lot of people that are coming through, you don't even realize.
It sounds like it's a good pilot, right? If, if the, if the cell of the system is a, it'll trace a license plate, you know, as it moves through communities on the block system. It'll be start, you know, like, let's say that.
You know, I totally understand what, no, listen, I totally understand what he's saying, and that's, and that's fine. If we wanna help you track somebody coming, somebody up. If we wanna help you track somebody coming from somebody else, but I'm probably gonna, like, protect the, my community in itself, you know what I mean? Not just, I'm waiting for a car, a murder that happened in Homestead, you're riding through here, something happened over here, I'm talking about. That, that's, that's a wonderful thing, but there's a issue that we have right here, ungrownness stuff.
So, and we're not off to you to look here, because we.
That's really great.
If, if collectively everybody wants to come up with, like, they have four cameras, that is, that is, the simple solution on Eighth Avenue was, you know, I, I could ask that longer.
Because if there're gonna be four cameras, then we can have two down here, two there, and one on West End, there's plenty enough cameras on that, you know?
Actually, Chief, uh, a question for you. Now, it's twelve thousand a year, roughly a thousand dollars a month for four cameras. Years ago, when customers would rent their phones, something was damaged, their phone would, their car. What about if these cameras were banned a lot? Do we have to replace them, or will they be that, or any of those?
That's something I think can ask about, but, um, any maintenance is on them, from what I understand, any, if cameras fail, is on them, they, they kind of makes it care.
But how about if they're banned?
That's.
Well, you'd have to climb up that. Let you be on camera. Instead of Rob, you're on camera.
So again, the, the price. The price at this point, I realize it's disparaging. I guess it's a good point. If, if they get everybody on board, they can get in contact with how they can count that by sort of jobs. Because like I said, everybody's on that system.
What was it?
That's something I have to talk to the rep again, he just, he's put a, so. They, no.
I'm just saying, even after this is over, if you said, hey, we wanted to, so we want to get that, but we.
So, I mean, it's, it's, we still have, um, inquiries at the district attorney's office.
Yeah.
About giving us cameras, and so they're in a turmoil in their office, and they're not doing anything. So the camera system, they should just, it's smart, they should try, where it's a better deal with them. So, so they're, they're. But again, we're not going to, you're risked going, I hate that. Because the power was there, you didn't have to ask anybody to put them up like this. Uh, the ref is willing, willing to come and talk to you guys, so if you want your, if you have any questions, I can have.
Any other questions? The tow department, reports you group, your active share. And they haven't told you about it. Parking replacement there. So, fire department.
Oh, in the month of August, we did thirty-three calls for a time of twenty-one hours and twelve minutes. We helped four company trainings. For total sixteen hours, uh, we were staffed two hundred and twenty-seven hours, we did two people at the fire station at those times. For a total of five hundred and seventy-six hours for the month. Our total over hours were two hundred and fifty-four hours, eleven minutes, and our overall day hours were seven hundred and seventy-five point seven one hours. We currently have three active members in recruit school, which are all, uh, junior firemen, and one is actually Zaire here. They completed their intro to, uh, intro to fire, and their hazard awareness, they're already in their mod two by the four, which is good. Uh, so it's three additional members, they're all juniors currently, but, uh, one is actually eighteen, but still in high school. And Zaire actually graduated this year also, another one is fifteen. The current ladder truck, the two thousand and three Pierce, is out of service for repair. Unfortunately, the extended retract cylinders went bad on it. It's basically, the, the two cylinders did withhold the ladder from retracting without hitting by it. So basically, when you put it up, it, it shimmies down. Pierce is the, is the manufacturer of it, which click is their, is their dealer in the area, they looked at it. Uh, it's, it's probably a costly fix, I'm waiting for estimates, there's two options, worst case scenario, they completely replace, or they can be rebuilt, they don't know if they can be rebuilt, so they can get them off, I'm just waiting on estimates back from that. Um, I suggested Pierce, or click doesn't work, they're the manufacturer, they're the dealer, uh, in the area. It, just the cylinder alone are thirty-five hours apiece, plus the labor costs. Unfortunately, if we want to sell the truck, we gotta fix it. There's two. So it's like seven thousand dollars for the cylinders, if they're brand new, they can't be rebuilt, they're looking into getting them rebuilt first. At this point, we're probably just gonna take that truck and put it out of service, even if it comes back, we're just gonna have that service and then get it up for sale, since we got the other one.
Chief, now, what you're talking about is this, the non-mayday truck we verified. He says, collect fire equipment company. Six thousand dollars.
That was for the engine?
That was for the engine.
Yes.
Is this a non-mayday?
Oh, that's probably, that's probably for the outfit of the FEMA truck we got. Yes. It should be on, I think it was thirty-two thousand total for the outfit. It was on that invoice, they went twenty percent down, what's that? That's for the new one to be outfitted.
So you would have to spend, uh, another seven thousand or more to get the ladder fixed on the other.
Yeah, I would say worst case scenario, probably ten on the old one to get fixed to sell.
So the two trucks were talking about fifty grand, closer to fifty grand, then probably.
Probably between forty or fifty. The original, so we solicited on the FEMA truck, we solic, so what we do now is we basically, we don't just go to one person. We solicit like three different bids. We had bids anywhere from forty-seven thousand dollars to thirty-seven thousand. We worked with Pierce to get that one down to thirty-two on the outfit of that one. To me, they're the most responsible, it's, they're the dealer for the manufacturer, and that's like a complete, from front to back on that truck. That's a complete aerial service, draining the hydraulic fluid on it because it's been sitting for so long. That's a complete don over, that's mounting over our new equipment, that's changing the scene lighting out on it.
So when you say you wanna put it out of service and sell, then we would need to replace that vehicle, wouldn't we?
No, that's, it's being replaced with that one that we need up there. Yes. But it's, I said it's still one. Yeah.
Well, what I'm saying, I need that, I'll let that one get it.
Oh, yeah, that's what I mean, uh.
You know, sometimes you have to fix something on your car, so it's ready to that.
Or a lot of that.
Yeah, you don't wanna sell it.
Yeah, and that's the thing is. Yeah, we don't want, no one's gonna buy a broke truck without a certification on the air of the place.
Well, then unless they want to fix it themselves.
Yeah, which is highly unlikely, likely, so we looked at some of the brokerage, sometimes they'll buy vehicles and they'll refurb them, to resell them. They don't wanna, they don't wanna do that, the ones we talked to. They'll sell it, they'll sell the truck for us, but they don't wanna buy it from us and refurb it and resell it. The current one.
Because we be having to make sure we get our money back, we know that.
So next one, kicks off fire prevention, we're looking at the whole, kinda like at the station, maybe they can pull up a meet your firefighters, like open house in October at the fire station. We talked about it a little bit, but we started to come up with a date, we just wanna put it out there, just in case for the next meeting. Um, we had one significant call, we got a house fire back in August fifteenth on West Street, and that's currently under investigation by the fire department's office, still. There's no determination on how long yet.
Any other questions?
Yes. When Pennsylvania American Water puts their hands on the west side of Homestead, um, I briefly talked with their government and their liaison, um, they can't guarantee, or she couldn't guarantee to me that they were replacing hydrants, but they are replacing all hydrants that are in poor condition. So I know, um, Tim previously had requested hydrants with specific fittings, like I have all of that stuff in email, but I don't know what.
That's what we just did.
Okay.
So that was, that was never on record at the water company, because we looked into that, that's why.
You submitted it directly to the water company.
Oh, yeah, so that letter that we had, that I sent to you, because they don't take it up a half a fire port anymore, as it comes from municipality. That letter that was sent to you is for that specific fitting.
And it, and it's for the west side specifically, because that, that project, and again, like, all of this is, all of this is evolving really quick. Our project, or their, you know, their lead line replacement improvements, they're sending that out to bid in October. So we wanna make sure that the project people then, that I have to talk to have that letter, to know that any replacements need to have those specs.
Yeah, so they confirmed they got that letter, so it should be in their system. And when a hydrant needs replaced, if it's broken, or they're doing a, a replacement project, that that fitting is specified for the hydrants.
All right.
We can verify, but it's too.
I'm gonna give it directly.
Yes.
Directly to the, because I'm gonna make sure that if it's part of their bid package, you know, that it's something that is going out for bid, that it's included, because, you know, where does it, one hand doesn't speak for the other.
Yep.
Sometimes.
But that letter, just give that letter that we sent to you recently.
And I hear you guys focusing on the west side, right, with the land, fixing on it. Um, did they choose to do that, because this side is worse than this side?
Yeah, they did.
So there's still a, all they should do is question, okay. So we're just gonna go west that first?
Yes, there's, there's such a high concentration of lead lines, specifically, the lead lines in the west side go into the, the streets though. Like, they're, they're doing all of that at one time. But there's still being lead line replacements for anybody in Homestead that has a lead service line. But there are so many of them in the west side that they have to tear up the roads.
I don't work water filtration, it's working. Because you got kids with all kinds of issues, and it definitely is gonna be because of that.
Someone's worth for sure.
Yeah, so women for environmental safety, she probably help in and check that.
Okay. Everything good? And, uh, so.
I mean, we're helping.
We talked about cameras, so the, the, uh, four forty Pittsburgh, that regional transit is telling us, you can all see a copy of the letter. They expect us to, uh, change bus stops on the water line. We're gonna call them tomorrow and make a different option maybe.
Yes.
But also, we go to the waterfront maintenance fund, it, it ends up that we have to pay for that. Say the waterfront maintenance fund has to pay for it, because it's on waterfront drive, and it's still our money, but, um, we split it with them on West End, so. It affects everyone.
Is P D L O for you guys to?
Yes.
Construct, do the work, or just?
Yes. Construct, do the work.
Shelters.
But P R T has money, they just got a fifty million dollar grant, right, so we're not gonna over, overlook that, they got the money.
Oh, we're telling them they have the money and they have to do it, every time they've said so far, I said, no.
Yeah, because if we allow them to talk us back as if that, they're not losing their money, they don't want to use their money.
We know that, we know that.
That's right.
Mr. Chairman, with the new apartment going down, being constructed down there, they should be eliminated, stop, they should be actually. Uh, it's, it's a very, very long, convoluted conversation, but there is a stop down there with those new apartments are going in. There's one on both sides of the street, right there. You know, that's, that's not affected in this conversation at all. This is only the ones on the east side of Amity Street. Plus, we do retail establishment, establishment.
Yeah, well, it's moving, it's moving.
That's the east side of Amity Street. Anyway, uh.
You're gonna call them tomorrow?
Yes, we're calling tomorrow. The certificate of perfectness for new sign at, at M D I, it's in there, it's pretty. Pretty simple sign, it's not obnoxious in any way. Which is nice. So, uh. There'll be a question for that. Waterfront apartment, or?
Yes, so we, well, they've got an application submitted for the slowly, the slab podium that's being poured down there, being inspected services. I'm waiting from the developer for the actual specifics on the rest of the building, so we can figure out what that requires, do that third party inspection service, and then we'll do financials. A hundred percent sign on that, but it does appear to be that it's, it will be okay for us to do. But I'll let you guys know that once I got the happy application. I was anticipating that this week, um, but I, I didn't, not just yet, probably first thing tomorrow.
Can we authorize now the inspection of the slab? Get that touched down?
Take my last email, you can tell me.
And who's gonna be inspected this slab?
It's M D I, I know. Not those people can do at this point, but they're. You guys already approved me to do that, so.
We need to see it.
We, we just wanna see it.
Yep.
Okay, and, uh, concurring resolution for the Act one fifty-two demolitions?
Yeah, we're adding on that.
Thank you, yes, follow that. That's, uh.
Yeah, so if you recall, last month, yeah, last month, we got word that we received full funding for the Act one fifty-two demolitions we requested last year. Um, now Jenny from the cog, you're asking, instead of our council, to adopt a concurrent resolution, saying that we're moving forward with it.
Now, I've got to start it on.
We need to declare this on this week, at least, because usually, if the past, if they're worthy of something, you have a train on them until they're down.
I can get the list now.
I don't mean, I'm actually.
Did you get that? Damn, it's supposed to send it to you.
I have a list.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I was worried you must have waited.
Oh, yeah, no, I got the, yeah, I've started, I've started the question.
So, when we get to the point of demolition and they're getting ready to tear down these homes, um, do we know, um, if these companies are using the wet, wet method? Because I don't see that, I, I, by the time I see something tore down, it's down, and I don't know that, so they, so.
They're required to.
So, so here's the thing, well, they are required by the health department, doesn't mean that they do that, because if they don't, who's reporting that to the health department?
You're right, Mary, I guess, I guess I can't sit here and say that I know for a hundred percent.
Because I, for me, this, for me, when I've seen people tear stuff down, I don't see them doing the wet, wet method, and Eleph's extension was one of them, when they tore us two houses down. Um, and so, could, if, if they're not, like, for the borough of Homestead, we can put that in an ordinance that it may, that they have to do that. Um, environmentally, you're tearing down a house, and the air and all that pollution is trying all around you, sucking it up.
It's in the spec.
It should be in the spec, yeah.
But what we can, if it's not in spec, we'll make sure that it is in the spec.
It'll go through the cogs, we should, they would be their, their dog.
But, but yeah, generally, that is, if we would need somebody to watch, whether it be, you know, Harry comes and checks on one of their demolitions, we have somebody from the American firm, whenever it's a demolition.
Usually, Dan's saying.
Well, you also say not here, but more like them, because even if they're, so here's my thing with the wet, wet method, it's in the spec, and they're doing it, right? We need to also make sure that that water is running back into the site and not into our sewer lines, and into our locker. You see what I'm saying? So it's, it's levels to it, and if, if that's not something that Homestead should really think about, the ordinance saying that, you're coming in here to tear us down, you need to be using that method.
Excuse the health department.
And even, what I'm saying is that. Well, he would just say that, what I'm saying is that it's in the health department, right?
Yes.
Um, I've seen them be tore down in Homestead, would have not used that method, and if we're not reporting that to the health department, the health department doesn't know that you're not doing it.
Exactly.
Right.
Not necessary, I don't need to be.
But because. Right, so we don't need an ordinance to do that, um, but we have to make sure that it's being done. Um, and I know it's an extra cost to the person tearing down a building, but if we're gonna stop and not look at it and then not report it, that, that's where I'm saying, we, do we wanna have an ordinance to make sure that that's being done?
They have the opportunity to account for that expense in that list, so that should be going, yeah, I mean, it should.
So we need to make sure that it's in the spec.
I know that one fifty-two years ago, they made drug毒类testing and asbestos testing.
Before you turned, that's what.
They made drug毒类, and with that, I'm specific to that one fifty-two. Yeah, so maybe that's.
So are they not doing that anymore?
I can imagine, so. It's, it's, because if you're doing any structural changes to a building, or adding any, they want you to do. So like I had somebody in Jacob, they got new doors on a building, and were required to do radon testing on that building, but they didn't know that going in.
I haven't personally dealt with it yet, but I can see that.
That's, that's one other thing to think of, but you wouldn't think getting handicapped tests for doors for a building position trigger, you know, some other.
That's essentially why. See why they might want to make sure that.
I, I can, I understand absolutely why, it's just something that I'm thinking of.
Oh yeah.
So when you said that's in the health department, right, that's a part of the health department, is that alligator county as a whole?
Yeah, so when, when the demolition contractor, they have to apply with the health department. They have to give permits for each structure. They have to provide what they're doing, if there's asbestos, you know, that's all, the health department collects all this information. They issue the permits, you know, they, these contractors are certified to do this, you know, they have, or if they have to have a payment, they have to have a license, the basic contractor to do that work for them. All of that goes into this, I mean, they, they need to know all that.
So, but because of that, you may not have to have a policy in your area or authorities because it's part of the.
It's more of an enforcement. It's, I mean, quite honestly, I say it's. It's covered.
The health department is not coming up with.
Right.
Right, so someone would have to say.
That's why you have to check your job, eventually follow.
Well, who would that person be?
Whatever you would like it to be, like say it would be Dan, you can assign him to go and check on a demolition. You can have Lou from, from his firm, he's generally an inspector on projects that we do. Uh, I've seen public works, people sit on projects, people just kind of depend on certain things and then what you're working with.
But if you don't know what, so for me, if you don't understand that method and you're not like, you're not trained on it, we don't want somebody from the shoot department doing it because they don't really know what that look like and what it.
It may not be appropriate for that particular project. There might be one where they can, they can go back to it and watch somebody put it and actually put the stone back to the jack there again.
And then the water is running back into the site and not.
Yeah, you guys, this is going to be project specific on D one. You may not always need to pay your rent here as well.
We normally down here, you guys, um, have utilized the, for all demolition inspections since my time.
Yeah, well.
Oh, he's, he's fully capable, he knows.
Yeah, he definitely did.
Yeah, so he's, he's been.
Yeah, we can do that. I mean, we'll pay somebody else when we already have a.
But I thought that that's why you guys did what you did, yeah, it makes sense. You have some other place to dump them.
Okay, there's a, so there'll be a resolution for that for Paul. Then the enterprise zone request for tip on spending. This is money in the enterprise zone, it's no borough money. Uh, and it's four hundred dollars that goes to Boy Scouts. Two, four, I think. Yes. And, uh, then the other one is the additional thirty-seven thousand dollars for the marketing person hired.
So, um, when I saw this, um, can we get them to show us? I mean, I went two years ago or something, they had a substantial amount of money. And it seems that that has gone down. Are they able to show us what they have spent that money on from the last two years? They, they presented something to us saying that they, I mean, because they always come to us, uh, to ask if we can spend the money. You also going to have a gun on or something. Um, so are we able to see like an itemized list of where they're spending this money at? And we said it's our money, it's their money. I'd like to see what they're spending the money on. Because Sarah's going down.
We want the manager right and ask for a, a five-year, um, accounting for the money.
Yeah, because do we know what the money is? I mean, do we, do we even know where it's at, where, how much is in there? No, I'm saying that we don't, we don't know what's in there.
Well, right now, that fund is seven hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Say that again.
Yeah, I, I figured that would be a, I mean, that was one of my questions, so I made sure to ask it ahead of the meeting. I figured, cause I mean, how about.
Right, so how does that get reversed? When we spend that?
Well, on our side, it gives you plenty of, a lot of, if we have a, uh, on the government side, probably that's.
So this is the amount that's in there now?
Yes.
And so they have to get off three boroughs to say, yes, we can spend this money?
Yes. So, I asked. Any other questions? Any other items anyone would like to discuss? Okay, then for the voting, we have a motion to approve the minutes, motion to approve payroll, motion to approve bills. And then, um, the, um. Yeah, SOPs, the committee has approved them and Sam has approved them. So, uh, they'll be there to vote on. Motion to hire a police officer.
I would like to make a motion to, um, you're doing that?
No, no, I was just, before you made your motion, I was going to ask, uh, LUTAC, the crossing guard, did we want to have they on and working and everything? I just need.
I'd like to make a motion that we disqualify. Yeah, there's number one.
Number one?
And then we hire candidate number two.
Okay, so you said you want to make a motion to disqualify one.
Candidate number one.
Hire number two.
Hire number two.
Every activity should make a separate motion on that.
Okay, well, I can do that. So I'll make a motion to disqualify. And on number one.
One, one second, since it's, 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 the item is on the agenda to even discuss it, that's perfectly fine. We can do this, this, this separate motion if you'd like to do that. So if you want to start with your first motion.
Which was to disqualify?
So we disqualified number one from the list.
Okay, there's a second.
Second.
Alright, and this is going to be a little bit clunkier because I wasn't ready for this.
So, cause I'm writing it down to go on. Henry made a motion to disqualify candidate number one from the list.
Yes.
And then I second it.
Alright, so we're going to go roll call and I don't have it ready in alphabetical order, so we're going to go seed order. So, um, Councilman White.
Yes.
Yes.
Minister Verwo.
Yes.
Um, Ms. Baker. President Cunningham. Vice President Nesby.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Uh, make a motion that we hire candidate number two.
We have a second, I'll second.
Hey, let us give it now.
Alright, Councilman White. Minister Verwo.
Yes.
Ms. Baker. President Cunningham.
Yes.
Vice President Nesby.
Yes.
And Councilman Shulte. Pretty much carries.
Okay, and then next, so the motion for a certificate of agreement for the sign in the M K I. Audience, words have any comments or questions? Are it on agenda items?
Oh, I'm curious, has anyone looked at the Homestead Borough's website lately? It's been a, it is, it is a, uh, one of the, and I guess we need to talk about, um, budget wise. Um, uh, website overhaul is something I, we started talking about last year. So our website is custom WordPress, very clunky to update, very difficult to have updated. I am the only one that somewhat knows how to get around it and I don't have the capacity to do all of the ups. You know, we need to have a, a better, easier to use website.
So, um, thank you for bringing that up, um, because when we talked about it last time, I looked into Blender. And I can have Kate come in and talk to us about it. They are a company that would revamp that whole entire thing and make it much easier for you as well as the community to navigate it. But it's so outdated, like the pictures, like everything is outdated. So when we talked about it, um, prior, actually, yeah, first quarter. Um, we talked about it, uh, because we weren't going to make that. So if we use Blender, right, and they revamp it however we wanted, we want it to look new and modern and easy for all of us to navigate, then when we bring in the administrative assistant, it'll be much easier for her to keep, do it all the time. Ed, take away, um, so the company was talking. Thank you.
Now, Blender, did they have a certain thing that you're going to be?